Second, it's now six o'clock. Um, if you're not in the meeting, um, anybody wants to fill out a speaker slip for any item that's on the agenda, please do that. We're gonna start with the roll call. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Brittingham.
President.
Commissioner Keith.
Here.
Commissioner Ben Heine.
Here.
Vice Chair Kunde.
Here.
And Chair Barron.
Here. And with staff, we have Kelly Lucia, our planning director. We have Celine Sevilla, our associate planner, our associate planner. Um, Gabriel? He's over there. There you are. I just, sorry. Gabriel, our planning technician, and Yessa Benson, our commission secretary. And can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Okay. Um, with that, we will go to the public comments. Do we need to, we don't need to read the one in the record, do we? Because it just becomes part of the record?
It'll just become, I'll make mention of it when we open the public hearing.
Okay. Great, thank you. And get approval of the minutes. Get a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of December 11th, 2023, regular planning commission meeting.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Now we'll go to our public hearing. Open the public hearing, and we'll go to staff presentation.
Sorry. Thank you. Good evening, chair, members of the commission, public. Thank you for being here tonight. Um, so tonight we have a public hearing for several applications. Sure. Um, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So, tonight we have a public hearing for several applications being brought forward to you tonight. This project is commonly known as New County Line Road Market, and the applications that will be presented are environmental assessment 2301, development plan review 2301, conditional use permit 2301, 2304, 2305, and variance 2303. So, moving along to the project vicinity, as you can see here in that little blue square, um, the project is located in the northeast area of the city. Um, the site sits at the south corner of the intersection of County Line Road and California Street, and the city's commercial neighborhood zoning designation. The applicant tonight is requesting approval of a service station with convenience store and drive-through car wash. So, moving on to the next slide, here we have the surrounding land uses. Um, as you can see here, that yellow area is residential low, and the pink area is commercial neighborhood. Um, and right across the street, we have other commercial uses in the city of Ucaipa. Um, and we'll get more into this towards the end of the presentation. So, a little bit of background, some of the commission and the public may recall that this site was previously entitled. Um, on June 2017, the planning commission approved resolution 201704 for, um, B&amp;H Mini Market, which was a gas station with convenience store and drive-through car wash. The project was sold off, and the approved entitlements have since expired. Therefore, new applications were required. However, the site design and layout of this project is very uniform to the previously approved design. Um, so on the next slide, we have the site plan, and this is for development plan review 2301, and this is for the site design and layout of the project. The project proposes a 3,950 square foot convenience store, um, and drive-through car wash, a 2,560 square foot fuel canopy with eight fuel pumps. Um, 22 parking spaces will be provided, as well as five bicycle parking spaces. The convenience store with the sale of vehicle fuel does require approval of conditional use permit, as well as the drive-through car wash facility, which are two of the conditional use permits that are presented before you tonight. And that is CUP 2301 and 2305. So, for the elevations, we have a very modern service station, which is consistent with other service stations within the city of Calamasa. Um, staff also conducted a site visit and found that the architecture overall meets, um, and complements the nearby structures in the area. So, next we have environmental assessment 2301. This is for the environmental analysis of the project. Um, staff reviewed the changes to the site and found that an addendum to the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration was appropriate. The addendum found that the project as revised is within the scope of the previously approved ISMD and the previously adopted mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, um, which found that noise mitigation is necessary. So, as part of that, the recommendation is that the project, um, implement noise mitigation, and the project has been conditioned, um, to construct two sound walls. So, two sound walls will go along the south property line and the west property line. Um, another condition as, is that the, uh, car wash must also only operate between the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and that is to mitigate the noise to the surrounding residential neighbors. So, aside from the convenience store and drive-through car wash, the applicant is, has also requested to obtain a type 20 alcohol license, which would be for the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption. Um, however, in January 1998, California Business and Professions Code established a moratorium specifically on the issuance of type 20 licenses. Um, Calamasa was placed on that list in December 2016, and again in January 2023. Um, and what that means is that any request to obtain a type 20 alcohol license does require a conditional use permit and a finding of public convenience and necessity. Um, the PCN is just a tool by which cities are allowed to tell ABC that there is a necessity for this license. If we were to find that the PCN is not needed, the commission, if they should choose, can deny the request, and ABC would honor that request and deny the alcohol permit when the applicant applies for it. Um, so staff has reviewed, um, the particular number of alcohol licenses issued within this location and census tract, and found, used that information to make the recommendation today. Staff anticipates that this convenience store would service our residents within the east area of the city. Many of our Oak Hill Estates and residential states' residents need to drive approximately two miles down County Line Road to reach a convenience store. So, if the conditional use permit for the alcohol sales is approved, variance 2303 would be required in order to allow the beer and wine sales to be located within 100 feet of property that is used and designated for residential. Per Calamasa municipal code, there are parameters that must be met, um, if an alcohol use permit is proposed, and one that the applicant cannot meet or the project cite is that it is located within 100 feet of a property that is used and designated for residential purposes. Um, and so, this is where you'll see that land use map again. So, as you can see here, um, it is abutted by residential uses, um, which, of course, are illegal, non-conforming uses. So, we have the mobile home park, which is no longer allowed in the city. It is a prohibited use. Um, and then we have a single-family dwelling, um, that is in a commercial neighborhood zoning, and right across from California Street, we also have more residential uses, which are within the commercial neighborhood zoning designation. And with that, staff tonight is recommending that the planning commission adopt resolution 202401, 202402, and 202403, approving environmental assessment 2301, development plan review 2301, conditional use permit 2301, 2304, 2305, and variance 2303. As always, if you have any questions, I am available. I also have Mike Thornton, our city engineer, here to assist with any questions. Um, and the applicant and property owner are also here, um, if the commission would like to make any remarks regarding the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Does the applicant wish to say anything?
With, uh, with the architect of the project, thank you for your time this afternoon. Uh, we've had the great pleasure of working with your staff during the past, uh, number of months to come up with the project before you, as, uh, Celine indicated, this project was approved, uh, a couple of years ago, and, uh, then it was, uh, transferred to, uh, Mr. Ranji, who's the new owner. And unfortunately, the CUP expired, and, uh, you know, he's very anxious to get the project going and get it built right away. And so, we're here before you to basically present the same project that was approved before, and hopefully seek your approval to, uh, complete this project as soon as possible. Uh, we've read the conditions of approval. No problem with the conditions of approval. Uh, we'd be able, no problem with compliance. And, uh, I just have one clarification, if you don't mind, staff can clarify something for me. Um, condition number 1.08. It says the outdoor lighting system in the commercial industry shall be, uh, reduced in lighting at least 50%, beginning at 10:00 p.m. or close of business. Uh, we understand, of course, the car wash is shut down and all that, but on the canopy lighting, you know, for secure, for, you know, they're operating 24/7, so for safety issue, if that's okay, if we can work with staff to, you know, have, I just want to make sure that it's safe and lit when the customers come in. That's, that's the only concern we have.
Staff can work with you on that item, so long as it's not a requirement of the environmental document. You shouldn't have parameters that are needed to work with.
I appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Great.
I'm here to answer any questions if you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Keith, we don't have any public testimony, other than one email?
Yes, so we did receive one email, um, from Alisa Jenks, uh, that was shared with commissioners, the media, and staff, um, and it just spoke in opposition. That will be made available via the minutes in verbatim.
Okay.
I wrote down the wrong item number. I thought it was item number three.
Oh, come on up.
Thank you.
Good evening, commission members and commission president. Excuse me for writing down the wrong number. I'm here to, uh, voice support for the increased commercial activity within the city. I think it's very important. One of the important issues within the planning area is what we call job's housing balance. Means that we need to give equal consideration to businesses, as well as homeowners and residences. Businesses, we want to see expand, create new jobs, create new ta, additional taxes to the city, but we also need to be aware that, of people have, should have a good place to live, a decent, safe, and healthy place to live. As such, I'd like to impose ejection to them giving, giving a variance to allow this property to be closer, or this project, this, be closer than normally allowed. I would suggest that, that variance, it allows it to be closer than a residential property, then by right, you'd, uh, reject it, and that this property be approved, or this project be approved, we, by right, meaning, give them what's required or allowed by local planning ordinance, and nothing more. But let's move forward with this, get more business here, but let's not trample on health and safety of, uh, residences. Let's have a good housing balance. My concern about this is, given that previously, the commission and council approved overriding the city's own laws regarding warehouses, and allowed, the city's law says 500 feet from census receptors. The city, the commission and the city council overruled the city's own ordinance about such. And I think that we're seeing a very bad, uh, trend here, and we're not really taking seriously the issues of job housing balance. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will go to, oh, we don't need an applicant rebuttal. Um, public testimony is gonna be closed, and we'll go to the commission discussion. John, you have any questions?
No, no questions. Uh, we like the project to journey, we look at it. I think the locations can be really good, especially people in that area, because we like to shop it. So, I think it's a, it's gonna be a good one.
Christine?
Yeah, I'm happy about it, too. Happy the gas station close by is, um, accessible for everybody up there will be great. Um, the landscaping, the two, mitigating the two oak trees, um, I think is important just because of natural birds and stuff, the hawks. Um, so I'd like to see that, you know, taken care of. Um, and then, as far as the alcohol variance goes, I don't, um, I'm either, you know, I can go either way on this.
Okay. That's it. Mike?
Oh, okay. Well, I enjoyed hearing the gentleman's comment, because the variance as far as the distance, and I walked the property. Also, those oak trees are pathetic. You should have chopped them down a long time ago and put a real one in there. It's like a grown bush. I tried to walk through that. It's gonna be interesting with that other property owner there, too, but, so, I did see a lot. I was kinda walking around. I did bring my tape measure, but I was trying to figure around, because I remember last time when we did this, one of the things was, was the automatic car wash. And I remember whatever times, and I know we have seven to nine here, and you said it was 10 to nine, 10:00 in the morning until nine, and originally it was seven. Uh, nine's gonna be a little late for the homeowners. I think we're gonna have to chuck that down. I think the last one we approved, we went to seven to eight or something on one of the other ones. Staff, I think we should have something common or consistent on that one, since we've already had one. Um, as far as the noise, that's the biggest one because of the air dryers. And I know they're getting better with technology and everything else, but we do have the one, single-family home on the one side, as well as the apartments on the other, and I've walked them and kinda got an idea. Eight-foot wall's not gonna cut it. I don't know how much more higher we can get, if we can angle the wall in to actually deflect the noise to have it coming back, but something needs to be done on that besides a straight wall. Trees will help suck up some of it, but something's gonna have to be, because that's gonna be the main thing. You're never gonna do anything with the gas fumes, but they don't whiff very far, and you're filling up your car, unless you're electric and you get the charge, you're gonna smell more gas in the canopy or the project. Um, now, we're talking about the lights on the canopy, and you were talking 24 hours. So, is this gonna be a 24-hour, someone's actually gonna be in the store, too, or will the store be, okay, so this will be a 24-hour service? Okay. That's actually gonna be nice, because we don't really have one of those. Seven-Eleven's farther down and all. I just wondered, have we played around with it to see if somehow we can adjust the buildings? The same thing with the car wash, so it's gonna be far enough away so we can project it? Or is this setup the way we have it, is just, because that's the only way it really fits with the canopy and having the big rigs come in to load the fuel? I'm just curious, do we have a little options to play around with that?
So, I'm not sure what the design team considered, uh, when they were looking at building orientation. However, what I can say is that there were noise technical studies that were performed, um, by various environmental consultants that found that with the implementation of the restricted hours, and with the eight-foot wall, that all noise, uh, impacts would be considered less insignificant, and within the city's noise ordinance.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna be that homeowner here, that (cough) every time it blows dry. Doesn't matter what time of the day, but we have to do that. So, are we, then, we are set on 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.? Is that what currently it was? Because that was red?
I think 7:00 a.m.
Or, I haven't written it.
So, those, those were taken from the previously mitigated negative declaration and the recommendation, um, but I believe you can change it, um, if you would like to.
Okay, because I'm thinking, most people, if they're gonna get the car washed and fill up, it's gonna be in the morning when they're off to work, so I would almost say, you're gonna have to probably keep it at the seven, eight at the latest, and at the nine, I hate to do it to you, but I would say I'd drop that down at eight o'clock to be reasonable, just in case we have families and everything else, uh, for the car wash. But like I said, the things are getting better. As far as the impact with the houses, I know we had that before with the people worried mainly about the gas more than the noise, surprisingly. Um, but I'd like to see what we can tweak on that, because that's gonna be the biggest thing, is the noise, I think. Otherwise, like they said, we approved this project before, and it seems like a good go. 22 parking spaces, I know we have our formulas that we have to do, but that seems ridiculously high for a mini market. That's gonna have half that effect. I mean, unless we're clowning parking spaces as far as in front of the gas pumps, too?
We do.
Okay. Because I, because I was thinking, why do we have that many? So, okay, so I'm glad to hear that. But that's my biggest thing with the variance. I know we're tough, and the whole thing is, is the way the zoning is around there, how it's residential, commercial, and that kinda plays in the, some of the stuff. So, um, if we could tweak some of it down, or put the canopy farther out, closer to County Line, to kinda alleviate that little bit, I realize the biggest thing is gonna be getting the big rigs in to offload the fuel. Luckily, we have a trucker who's our chairman, and he can tell you all about turning radiuses and how to get trucks into places, but that would be my main concern on that part. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Eric?
Uh, just to echo what Mike said, the timeframe, um, so what do we do about that? Do we just make a, a condition in the recommendation that we change that?
So, uh, should the commission choose to adopt the resolution approving the development plan review, it would be with revised condition of approval, uh, modifying the hours of operation for the car wash.
So, instead of seven to nine, seven to eight, would that be acceptable? Very acceptable with that? They're agreeable to that? Then, okay. That's all I want.
Good, great. I had two, and the one was on the block wall on, on the south side mainly, not really the west side, because that, the house is on that side, it's not near. It's the location of where the, the location of where the car wash is, because this was gonna be an ARCO station originally, and ARCO units are notoriously louder than everybody else's units, and that one coach, it's right there in the back where this thing's gonna be, is gonna be the one most affected. So, um, I was gonna make the proposal that, um, we have an eight-foot wall already, but if something happens where the sound is too unbearable for that person in that coach, that we would go up the other two feet to get to 10-foot, if that would be okay? Because I think that way, it, it would help, and 10-foot's going pretty high. Nine would be so-so, but a 10-foot would be perfect with the amount of blocks that you have, and it's an easy fix on top of the wall, but just in case that one coach is gonna get blasted by the sound. And I've stood in front of the ARCO once before, and let me tell you, from across the street, and they're deafening, you know?
I just wanted my, I just wanted to make sure, you know, the way you find the car wash is based into a compliant, just wanted to make sure it's not going to, I just wanted to make sure the glory is not mixed by, I mean, I think it's okay going 10 feet, that's not a problem, but it's only, you know, that's a quality design.
Yeah.
Exit's going into. Yeah.
The exit's going into, but the sound is what I'm saying, that the sound is deafening, because I find, ARCO's, I get complaints, I get phone calls all the time, why is this one so loud? I don't know. The air blower they're using, because I use a 76 all the time myself, and I listen to the sound, you know, and stuff like that, but you hear how it is on both sides. Even on the, even on the south side, even it's the backside, you still get that tunnel effect going through there. So, the other side, yes, there's a lot, because it's there on the outside end, you're gonna hear it more that way, but you still get quite a bit when you're in the entrance of it. So, not as much, but that's what I'm saying, well, I'll, I'll go with the eight-foot, but if the person that owns that coach right there says, hey, you know, it's, it's just deafening to me, and these are seniors, you know, so, and if they come back and say, hey, is there anything we can do, then we still have the option to say, hey, can we go up the extra two feet, just on that wall? I'm not, I don't think it's gonna be an issue with the west wall because of the way it's orientated, so I think that'll be quite all right. And my second one was trucks. California is not a truck route, and I see that we're gonna be exiting doubles down California now, to come back down Avenue L, or that's what's in here, and I don't think the very first truck that drives in there is not gonna do that. They're gonna make that left turn and go back down County Line Road, because that concrete median where the roundabout is, I can't get my 40-foot through there. So, if I can't get a 40-foot through there, and I see they use doubles to make that easier, that's nice, only two companies that I know have still used doubles, um, and, uh, but they shouldn't be going down California, because that's not a, that's not a truck route.
So, the city actually does not have designated truck routes?
Right.
That's a project that we're working on. Um, so at this point in time, um, there actually aren't any formal restrictions on where trucks can drive within the city.
I get that, but as a, as a driver, seeing what I'm seeing here, and knowing that I can't get my 40-foot through those things anymore, you know, a 40-foot trailer, not my 48-foot, but a 40-foot trailer can't drive up through the roundabouts that we have now, can't do it. You're gonna have that truck traffic running down that, uh, California Street, and we're gonna have the people in California start yelling at us, because now we're putting truck traffic on their street, and it's already bad enough from what was going on with the roundabouts now, and what was happening with construction.
We do have our, our city engineer.
That's why I'm asking. Put him on the spot.
Yeah. Mike?
Well, I, I don't have a lot to add than what Kelly said. We don't have any designated truck routes, so trucks are allowed to go southbound. I get the concern that there are residential neighborhoods down through there.
Right.
But it is not prohibited today. Um, as you know, there's a raised median along County Line Road, so if they tried to come out, they couldn't make a left and go down County Line Road.
No, actually, the driveway, it's installed right now, unless the driveway's moving, but the, where the driveway is currently right now, after the roundabout is installed, that driveway is way too close to the median, if you were to come out and try and make that turn with a tractor-trailer. It would be next to, next to impossible.
So, then, can I ask you to bring the site plan up, so I can follow what Mike is describing? Because, I don't know if you could bring it up on the screen?
The concrete median's roughly right about here, going across, and to come back out of here, even with the set of doubles, you're talking two 28-foot doubles with a 20, a 20-foot truck, you're gonna have, be hard-pressed to make that turn and be able to go down California. I think they should still all go down, back down County Line Road and head back down to the freeway.
So, Mike, what you're saying is, they could make a left?
Yes, they can make a left, but on the, on the map here, it shows them going down California. I'm like, that's not gonna happen. We're gonna lose, we'll have the same issue we had with, uh, the market, or shops at Calamasa, where the concrete medians had to be removed because the trucks kept hitting them, and they had to be taken out. You'll have the same thing with that median there in the middle, if the trucks go that way. Now, as far as I know, the only truck route in the city that's listed on the general plan is my area, Seventh Avenue L and Seventh again.
So, so Mike, how, how are you suggesting amending the conditions to say that the, that only County Line can be used to?
I was, I'm, I was looking to amend the conditions, I was looking to, because pretty much it's gonna be driver, driver choice.
Right.
But, um, I was asking, the map right here, because when whoever did this map here for the drawing here, I was like, it doesn't work.
It certainly shows that the trucks are gonna go all the way to the other side of the street, so if their raised median is where you're pointing at.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
Right.
So, they would have to go.
That's what I was saying, so there's, there's no, pretty much drivers, we learn by doing, and once we pull in there, because we see them deal with the ARCO station all the time, there's only one driveway, and they have to literally go all the way around the parking lot to the farthest outside wall next to the freeway, unload, and then drive all the way around. Wait for the cars that's at the very front at bump number one, for that car to leave, so they can use that spot to be able to make that turn to exit out the parking lot, because it's, there's not enough space.
So, I, I look at our planning team, can we, can we modify a condition to, so that ingress and egress all has to come from County Line Road, eastbound to the site, westbound away from the property? Is that acceptable to the applicant as well?
Coming on, sorry, just sort of going on, re-fundating into the site, and when they exit, go westbound.
That's correct.
Yeah. I mean, like you said, it's a driver's choice.
It'll be a driver, driver choice, yeah. That's it. Great. Thank you.
Excuse me, chairman?
Yes, sir.
Have the city put up a restrictive sign? You know, you've seen the other cities put them up.
Yeah, no, I don't think.
No, no heavy-duty vehicles on this street.
I really don't think it's gonna get to that point. I really think that what we'll do, it'll be driver choice, if it's just the way, the thing they're saying that drivers, this, because sometimes when we get these maps and they give them to us, and you just can't do it. I, I've made calls to dispatch before and just said, not happening, I'm going my way, I, my truck, my rules. And that's the way it was gonna be. and you just can't do it. I, I've made calls to dispatch before and just said, not happening, I'm going my way, my truck, my rules. And that's the way it was going to be. Okay, so with that, we can go on to, no more discussions, anything else? Nothing? Okay, motion? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion, I just want to know how to word it in such a way to cover the issues that we've discussed. So the.
The time on the, the time on the car wash is the only one. The one with, that I just brought up is a non-issue.
You're right, but the blocks, the blocks is.
Block wall, when we get to the block, yeah, do the block wall.
So that would go under the first resolution to put a.
That, sorry, that would be in the second resolution for conditional use permit twenty-three oh one and the development plan review twenty-three oh one.
So number one is just number one?
And that's to revise condition five point zero two to change the hours of operation. And I believe the commission agreed seven AM to eight PM.
Right, and that would go under number two in that?
Correct.
Right, and so the block wall would also go under number two?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll give it a go. I make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one approving environmental assessment twenty-three oh one, evaluating minor technical changes to the project and find the project as revised within the scope of the previously approved IS slash MND and previously adopted MMRP. Number two, adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two approving development plan review twenty-three oh one, conditional use permit twenty-three oh one and conditional use permit twenty-three oh five for proposed service station and convenience store with drive-through car wash. In addition to that, to operate from the hours of seven AM to eight PM. And a option to have the eight-foot wall adjusted to ten foot if necessary.
Upon request.
Upon request. Is that good? Perfect, okay, on to number three. Adopt resolution twenty twenty-four oh three approving conditional use perfect, permit twenty-three oh four for alcohol sales and variance number twenty twenty-three dash zero three to allow the alcohol sales to be located within one hundred feet of property used for residential purposes.
And I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You got it, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, this is item number three. Extension of time for tentative track map three seven eight oh two.
Right, good evening Chairman. And it looks like we do have one potential conflict of interest, so Commissioner Pete will refuse himself from the item.
We'll bring you back.
Also, please help me in welcoming Gabriel Argoyas. This is his first item with the planning commission and.
Awesome.
Nice. Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you Chairman and members of the commission. Tonight, we have an extension of time for tentative track map three seven eight zero two. Yeah, also known as the Redmond map. As you can see on the screen, it is a tentative track map that subdivides a forty-four acre parcel into a hundred and ninety lots. Seventy-nine of those lots are for single-family residential and eleven of those lots are for open space, landscape, greenway and drainage. This map was originally approved by the planning commission back on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. The applicant has now requested a twelve-month extension to market the approved map to home builders. Per the applicant granting this extension will allow ongoing negotiations to continue. Cala Mesa Municipal Code allows the applicant to apply for discretionary approval of a twelve-month extension. So if approved tonight, the map will have a new expiration date of April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. And that's all I have for you today. Exactly, for extension twenty-three dash zero four. If the commission has any other questions, planning staff will be happy to answer.
Thank you. Good evening.
I don't have anything.
Mike?
Okay, first thing, have we got the water and sewer conflict worked out yet? Or are we still on a holding pattern on that?
Actually, yes, the necessary lab coactions have taken place. The property was detached from the Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District for water service and annexed into the Ucapa Valley Water District.
That was a big one, awesome. And let's see, I was looking at one of the maps when we're talking about the affordable housing. Being in real estate, the numbers are completely whack. But before we go there, I noticed there were some dark blocks on the one map. I was going to say, were those actual lots that were going to be selected for low, the low-income units? Or is it builder's choice where he wants to stick the low income? I know we have to spread them out and all, but I was just curious, the way the map is with those, or were those the empty lots?
Those are affordable units. So the Cala Mesa Municipal Code, our inclusionary housing ordinance requires that prior to the first discretionary action, which in this case was the map approval, any project subject to our inclusionary housing ordinance had to identify the location of the inclusionary units. And so what you're seeing there on that exhibit was the applicant's selection of where the affordable units would be located.
So the applicant chose them? Okay, because some of them I can understand a lot, some of them were the bigger lots and I was like, that's.
I do anticipate.
But if the developer picked it.
I do anticipate that that will be modified moving forward. It's just the concept for the initial map approval, but we have been in discussions with the landowner who would like to potentially avail themselves to other options that would allow them to comply with that ordinance.
Okay, and then the other thing, I guess it's just a personal gripe being in real estate. The home affordability analyst, analysis. Start off with prevailing interest rate three point one percent. Now, as of today, it's seven point one. I was being generous when I ran numbers and called it six and a half with good credit. The numbers just don't work out. First, let's go with the average number of bedrooms. They are tend to be building bigger houses, however, if you're going to have the lower end and everything else, these are starter homes if you're trying to get the lower income for how much money this guy's going to lose on each property. And we rounded, we went from four point three three, and my math is a little fuzzy, I haven't been in school around, but we rounded up to five. Usually if you're below fifty percent, you round down, so it should be four bedrooms, not five. You go on five bedroom, which could be one of the largest houses available. And if we're dictating that he has to have five bedrooms available for every one of those low-income, that's really getting a bit excessive in my point. But I'm going back to looking at the money numbers and I understand median income rises and falls and everything else. But just theoretically, because I had a little problem following in this. First off, property tax, one point, one point four percent tax, that's unrealistic. I've got clients that are in newer homes or anything, we're not bad as Beaumont, but realistically, you're looking at one point eight percent to be all fair. So for the builder, let's get some honest numbers here. Go with the interest rates. If the house was somehow slashed down to the two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three and a half percent down is ten thousand dollars. The interest rate, principal tax, if you just go on P and I, it would be seventeen fifty, which is already above their fifteen hundred allotment for what they can spend. That does not include the property tax, which at the one point eight, even coming down a little bit, would be an additional five hundred and thirty-eight dollars per month. Homeowner's insurance, I lowball that at sixty-six. With all the fire stuff we have going on, you're not going to find homeowner's insurance under a hundred bucks a month. But let's say maybe we get a bargain on that one. And then you have the PMI, the private mortgage insurance, that's a couple hundred bucks a month. Realistically, at the two eighty-seven price point that's discounted, the monthly payment with your tax PMI, which realistically, they're going to have an escrow account, that's the way to do it to make sure everybody's paid, you're already up to twenty-three hundred. Now, for some reason, if the price is three hundred and fifty-eight, seven fifty, which would be a heck of a deal because you can't find a four-bedroom new-built house probably for under six hundred thousand. So if you're making this guy give it away, at the same three and a half percent down, six and a half percent, we're looking at just principal and interest payment of twenty-one, almost twenty-two hundred, and the realistically total payment for the whole ball of wax, we're almost at thirty-one hundred. So I understand that we need to have people do their part, but I'm just, I really have a hard time saying how the developer is going to eat this much on this. And if you look at what the house is, because now we have the energy regulations and everything else, it used to be they could just say, okay, we won't put can lighting in there, we'll put an outlet up there and you can put a light on there, you're going to plug, plug in a lamp. Well, they can't do that now because of all the regulations. So where they would have been able to dumb them down inside to try to save some money, there is no room left to do that. Appliances are minimum, they buy them in bulk, so they can't really go cheaper appliances. And if they did, that would save them a thousand at the most. I'm just worried about the numbers and so when we actually get to this, I just would like to see more realistic numbers. And that, that's the biggest thing is, I just see that and to say to the guy building this, okay, you're laying out all this money, we want our five percent low-income houses that are going to have it. I think there's got to be some leeway, there's going to have to be some free tubes going in there, not the four or five bedrooms. He's got to have some leeway. And I still like to know how we compensate or whatever the builder for that considering constitution says you can't take something without compensation. And I know we're allowing the builder in our city, but he's giving us a tax base on property taxes and everything else. He's paying his fair share. So I have some issues just on that, so that, I wanted to bring that out.
Thank you, so just a couple of points on that. So the property owner is the one that developed the affordable housing plan, so all of the numbers and the assumptions did come from the property owner. Also, that plan was approved back in twenty twenty-two. I know things have changed, maybe not that much, but things have changed in the real estate market since then. And a third point would be that the city is actively working on affordable housing in lieu fee. So currently, our inclusionary housing ordinance does not allow payment of an in lieu fee to satisfy that obligation. That will be going forward to the city council in the next, I don't know, three to six months for consideration. And this particular project is very interested in being able to utilize an affordable housing in lieu fee. So in order to satisfy municipal code requirements, they prepared the plan back in twenty twenty-two, but we would be looking potentially at a map revision to allow payment of an in lieu fee at a later date. And so I think that that plan was an exercise in municipal code compliance, but whether or not it's actually going to come to fruition, I'm not so sure.
Okay, and then as far as the in lieu fee, I'm guessing that's going to go into some account under the city's control. However, the last time I looked, I have not met or seen a city that actually builds anything. So then what are we doing with that so-called money? Are we going to give that to a developer and say, hey, here's some free money if you build something cheap? Are we doing grants? How does that money get doled out?
So I do want to make sure that we stay on task with the item that's in front of us. But just briefly, I'll say that it would be a partnership with an affordable housing developer. It really is a specialized field and so the city would partner with a specialized expert in the field to hopefully bring a project someday in the future.
Lots of apartments.
Thank you.
Eric? No. Cool. I'm cool, all right, so we have all, we've got everything we need. Make a, make a, adopt a resolution twenty twenty-four oh four approving extension of time twenty-three oh four for tentative track map thirty-seven eight oh two for one year or until April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, subject to the conditions of approval contained in attachment A of the PC Resolution twenty twenty-four oh four. And find that the project, um, extension twenty-three oh four requires no further environmental analysis pursuant to the Public Resources Code, section two one one six six and sequel guidelines, section one five oh six one B three, one five one six two, one five one six three and one five one six four. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
You got a second, all in favor? Aye. Very good. Get John back in here. Thank you, Mike. It'll come back when it gets to become a real project, it'll come back and then we can nitpick the bejesus out of it.
Yeah, but it makes sense, it was prepared a few years back, that would reflect.
Yeah, it was back in like twenty twenty-one when we did.
Yeah, right. But when the interest rates were still decent.
They were kind of, kind of bitter, yeah.
It's no matter what they say, they might, someone might manipulate it before the election, but as soon as the election's over, it doesn't matter.
All right. Okay. Last item on our agenda is annual reorganization of the planning commission staff.
Okay, so it's that time of year where we have to do our annual commission reorganization. So I, as the secretary, go ahead and open it up for nominations for chair.
I would like to nominate Eric Kondith as our new chair.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, do I have any other nominations? Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
There we go.
So I will go ahead and now open it up for vice chair.
I would like to nominate Christine Champa-Mo.
I'll second that.
My name's changed. My name's Van Hining now.
Van Hining, where, you've got married?
No.
No?
Other way around.
Don't ask.
Oh, okay, never mind. Ben Hine, I, I apologize, my bad.
And do I have a second?
I second that.
All right.
I'm so sorry.
So we're all in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay.
Not yet, not till next meeting.
Well.
And you're going to raise your hand too, Eric. Raise your hand.
And the last item is our here. All you.
I have no report.
No report?
No report.
Okay. See everybody at the next meeting?
February twelfth.
I want to thank the staff, you guys.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm not that far, didn't I? That was. Such riches, chain seeds, yeah. Yes.
Oh, I guess the only thing I would say is, I know it's.